...have our invocation by the Reverend Justin Peters, Treasurer of Central Pudna Ministerial Alliance, Founder of Keys of Authority Ministry. Can you also lead us in the pledge as well?
Sure. Which would you like first? The prayer first and then the pledge?
Yes ma'am. Number one, please stand.
Y'all please, little down here, hands. Heavenly Father, we begin by thanking you for your many blessings and abundant blessings upon us. Thank you for loving us from your boundless and gracious nature. Your loving kindness is truly better than life. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for all those assembled here today. We ask that you would graciously grant our city commission wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreements, personal peace in their lives, and joy in their tasks. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those whose lives and who work in and around our city. We pray this all in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Where are you getting it? In light of International Women's Day, I want to make sure that we recognize all of our ladies in the audience as well as on the dais, and especially we have some women in ministry who are here today, and I want to make sure that we recognize you as well, Commissioner Larkhart, and also Pastor McCoy. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill?
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Present.
Mr. Borum?
Present.
Commissioner Campbell?
Present.
Commissioner McCaskill?
Here.
All members are present in the conference room, and you have a form.
Thank you very much. Has everyone had an opportunity to read the minutes from both the workshop and the regular meeting?
Motion to approve.
Second.
This is a motion to approve, a second all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed motion carries unanimously. Moving on to public recognitions. Proclamation reads as follows: Whereas March is Women's History Month, when we celebrate American women of every race, class, and ethnic background who have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, they've played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of life in the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home, and having played a unique role throughout history by providing the majority of early charitable philanthropic and cultural institutions in our nation. And whereas in 2018, National Women's History theme, nevertheless, she's persisted honoring women who fight all forms of discrimination against women, represents the opportunity to honor women who have shaped America's history and its future through their tireless commitment to ending discrimination against women and girls. This theme embodies women working together with strength, tenacity, and courage to overcome the obstacles and achieve joyful accomplishments, and who fight all forms of discrimination against women and girls, and by doing so have shaped America's history and our future. And whereas America's women of every race, class, and ethnic background service early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement facing stark inequalities, women have demonstrated the power of voice, persistent action, and believing that meaningful and lasting change is possible in our democratic society. This month, the City of Palatka celebrates women fighting not only against sexism but also against many other second forms of discrimination, including discrimination based on race, ethnicity, class, disability, sexual orientation, veteran status, and many other categories by dismantling the structured, cultural, and legal forms of discrimination that are far too long have pledged, have plagued American women. Now therefore, I, Terrell Hill, Mayor of the City of Palatka, Florida, together with the members of the Palatka City Commission, do hereby endorse and proclaim March 2018 of Women's History Month in the City of Palatka, and we call upon its citizens to join us in observing this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities which celebrate women and recognize the ongoing persistence of our mothers, grandmothers, aunts, sisters, neighbors, and friends. I ask our citizens to join us in celebrating all women this month and throughout the year. I, in witness whereof, and hearing, I, hearing do set my hand, and cause to be affixed to seal the City of Palatka, Florida, on this eighth day of March in the year by law or 2018. Terrell Hill, Mayor, Mayor Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, and Tammy McCaskill, Commissioners, I entertain a motion.
So move.
There's a motion on the floor, Vice Commissioner Campbell, a second by Commissioner Borum. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed motion carries unanimously. We'll present this to you on behalf of the future Women's Ministerial Alliance. And again, if I can just have all the ladies in the audience, please stand for me at this time, let me make sure we recognize you and let you know that you got through the back of the room. Ladies, we salute you and we thank you for all that you do. Next, Ms. Garcia, Pudna County Health Department. Proclamation reads as follows: Whereas the National Colorectal Cancer Roundtable, the Center of Disease Control and Prevention, the Cancer Research Foundation of America, and American Digestive Health Foundation, and the White House have joined together to encourage Americans to observe March 2018 as National Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month to encourage eighty percent of adults fifty and older to get screened by 2019. And whereas colorectal cancer is the second most common cancer diagnosed in men and women in the U.S., every three minutes someone is diagnosed with colon cancer, and every ten minutes a life is lost to this disease. The risk of colon cancer increases with age. Nine out of ten cases occur in people over fifty years old, and the likelihood is also greater for people of African-American or Eastern European descent, and those with bowel disease or a family history of colorectal cancer. And whereas one-third of Faridians aged fifty do not receive annual screening for colorectal cancer, symptoms can include stomach pains, aches, or cramps. They do not go away in weight loss without a known cause, yet many cases have no symptoms, especially early on, when it can be prevented or more effectively treated. So it's crucial for people to get ready for screenings, which are now covered by most health insurance plans for adults ages fifty to seventy-five, at no cost to the patient. And whereas the Florida Department of Health and Senior Services, Bureau of Cancer Control and partnership with the Florida Cancer Consortium, the American Cancer Society, and the Center for Disease Control and Prevention remain committed and dedicated to inform the public about colorectal cancer prevention and screening. Now therefore, I, Terrell Hill, Mayor of the City of Palatka, together with the members of the Palatka City Commission, hereby endorse, declare, and designate the month of March 2018 as Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Palatka, and hereby encourage the citizens of Palatka to observe the month by contacting the Pudna County Health Department to inquire about colon cancer screening programs available locally, as well as any other information regarding the prevention and control of colorectal cancer. And witness whereof, I, hearing do set my hand, and cause to be affixed to seal the City of Palatka, Florida, on this eighth day of March in the year by law or 2018. The Terrell Hill Mayor, Mayor Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, and Tammy McCaskill, Commissioners, I will entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor, a second all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you so much. Ma'am, before you let, I said the other way, I'm gonna tell you who she had as company and escorted them around our town and gave us such a great reference to post that. Didn't I know about us before? Last week she had a guest here that she took around, and I'd like her to let people know.
I'd be honored to do that, thank you. We have been working on inviting the Surgeon General, Dr. Celeste Phillip, to visit Pudna County, in particular to share her story as how she found her careers to all ninth and tenth grade girls during a Girls' Can event at the St. John's River State College. And I had the opportunity to show around Palatka Thursday night, and then I think Ms. Mary just about wore us out on Friday with the girls, and then the opportunity to share some of the documentation that we're trying to put together and help Ms. Mary copy to get to the National Black Museum in Washington, D.C. So I was so happy to be able to tell the Surgeon General that the Health Department began at the Lawson Hospital, and that it was the first accredited black hospital in the state of Florida. We have a lot of accolades in our town and our community, and people are not aware of it. So I was very pleased to be able to bring her here, and she will be back again next year. Next year, I'll tell her that she has to stay, so we can make it to the Azalea. So I will make sure she can extend her visit. It's legislative, end of legislative week, so I was very honored that she would come down and spend that many days with us. And thank you, Ms. Mary, for your time.
She didn't drive you around, did she?
No. That was in the heart attack, not my idea.
And I'm gonna tell her, no, she's not talking about me, she's talking about a grandmother of mine.
I want to, again, thank you so much for your support for colorectal cancer. As the proclamation says, it's the second leading cause of death in cancer, but it can be prevented if it's caught early. So as much as we don't like it, if you're over fifty, you really need to have a cancer screening every year. It's called the FID test, and we won't go into that one, but check for, get checked every year. Every five years, sigmoidoscopy, and then a colonoscopy every ten years. The numbers are that this year, one hundred and forty thousand people will be diagnosed with colorectal cancer. The difference is if you can get diagnosed early, you won't have to die of it. So I thank you for your continued support of this mission.
Thank you. The next up is the Pilot Club.
Shortened.
Shortened. I'm late, I'm late now, dude.
You're right.
Whereas the Pilot Club of Palatka is one of more than five hundred and thirty clubs throughout Pilot International, a global organization of executive business and professional leaders working together to improve the quality of life in local communities throughout the world by providing guidance and encouragement to our communities through sponsorship of safety and awareness programs, especially as they relate to brain-related disorders. And whereas each year, thousands of Faridians are diagnosed with devastating disorders of brain, of the brain and nervous system, including Alzheimer's disease, aging, stroke, alcohol, and drug addictions, spinal cord injury, autism, schizophrenia, and mood disorders, all of which cause considerable pain and suffering for the victims and their families. And whereas in this century, we are embarking on a new era of discovery based upon rapid progress being made in studies of the brain, and the powerful new tools available for neuroscientists, greatly benefiting people who are incapacitated by spinal cord injuries, depressive disorders, epileptic seizures, Parkinson's disease, Huntington's disease, muscular dysphagia, cystic fibrosis, and other life-threatening disorders. And whereas new insights for neuroscience research will give us a more concise understanding of how people become addicted to drugs and thereby provide more effective treatments for those with chemical dependence. And whereas hundreds of scientists at Florida's premier universities, private colleges, and research institutes are at the forefront of many promising efforts being made to better understand the complexities of the brain, find better treatment for brain disease, reduce the cost of diagnosis and treatment of neurological conditions, and implement cures. Now therefore, I, Terrell Hill, Mayor of the City of Palatka, Florida, together with the members of the Palatka City Commission, do hereby proclaim the week of March twelve through eighteen, two thousand and eighteen, as Brain Awareness Week in the City of Palatka, calling this observance to the attention of our citizens, committing the Pilot Club of Palatka for their dedication to raising the community's awareness of brain-related disorders and their efforts to help relieve the suffering of victims of brain-related illness and disease. And witness whereof, I, hearing do set my hand, and cause to be affixed to seal the City of Palatka, Florida, on this eighth day of March in the year by law or 2018. Terrell Hill, Mayor, Mayor Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, and Tammy McCaskill, Commissioners, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor, a second all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed motion carries unanimously. Thank you, ladies, again.
We just want to say thank you. We do work hard to support brain awareness, and one of our main interests is the E.H. Miller School. We're out there for almost every one of their events, and we thank you, and we know that we had, at one time, the swings that were supposed to go in the park. I think something didn't happen there, but we're still trusting that y'all are gonna get that done, because there are those children who cannot swing in regular swings, and we did this for E.H. Miller also. We ordered the swings for, you know, where their backs are supported and they're able to swing like regular children. And we just, we're really interested in going further with this, and we had a fundraiser the other night, we did see any out there. It was called the Bongo, and I would play Bongo, but the community really supported us, and we just want to continue, and we'd like y'all to continue support.
Make sure we're informed to let us know, I don't know who we're...
Definitely you want to be involved.
Wait till next year.
Okay, absolutely.
Go with Aaron's spirit.
Britta's our incoming president, so beware.
I bought my ticket, but didn't make it, but I paid for my...
Yes, you did.
Yes, ma'am. So we're gonna, if I may, just prior to doing our employee recognitions, I want to move up one item on the agenda, and that is item four, and that is our appointment of our Finance Director. Item four is to concur on the City Manager's recommendation to appoint Logan Becker as the City of Palatka Finance Director effective in March twenty of two thousand and eighteen from NIS code two dash one four one. There's a motion on the floor, a second all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed motion carries unanimously. Mr. Becker?
Women's month.
If you would come up at this time, that, who do you have with you today?
Oh, I have my mother with me.
You got your mother? Would your, would your mother join us? Would you be so kind as to join us up front at this time? If you guys could stand up in the front of the room, that would be great. Mom, do you mind holding the Bible? I always wear your door, and it's Finance Director.
Hold the Bible, and stand over there next to the book.
Commissioners, do you want to join?
I had a sale, oh, I'm a little jealous.
He's a millennial. I'm gonna stand behind you.
I, Logan B. Becker.
I, Logan B. Becker.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States and the state of Florida.
Of the United States and the state of Florida.
Against all enemies, foreign or domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign or domestic.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
Loyalty and allegiance.
Loyalty and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And that I am entitled.
And that I am entitled.
To hold office under the Constitution.
To hold office under the Constitution.
That I will uphold the charter of the City of Palatka.
That I will uphold the charter of the City of Palatka.
Florida.
Florida.
And faithfully perform.
And faithfully perform.
All duties of the office.
All duties of the office.
Of Finance Director.
Of Finance Director.
City of Palatka.
City of Palatka.
On which I am about to enter.
On which I am about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Yours more.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
I'm here and signing.
I'm happy to be here.
Okay.
No, she said it. My husband's gonna be here.
Get some signatures, and go ahead with your speech.
All right, well, I just want to thank everybody, especially you and Mr. Wilson for giving me this opportunity. I am beyond thrilled to be back in my hometown. I have been in Jacksonville for the past four years, driving back and forth, and so this opportunity is just a blessing for me and my family. I want to say that the environment and the future for Palatka, it's really inspiring. I think that we have a bright future, and I'm just glad to be on board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments?
I'm glad to be a woman here, you love it.
And how fitting, International Women's Day.
And women can do budgets, you know, we take care of home and children, so we probably got that money.
He's coming, he's coming.
All right, Ms. Logan, welcome you to the City of Palatka once again, and again, I think she'll, she'll do, serve us well, and worked with her mom for a number of years at Water Management, so she's cut from a good cloth.
I'm super excited now to have her here, to have a young, bright mind that's open, that can actually grow with the city, so that means a lot to me, to have another younger person on board. Nothing to the, nothing to the...
Yeah, we got the channel.
But we're super excited, because that's the, that's the atmosphere that we want to have for Palatka. We want to be able to give Palatians an opportunity to return home and help build a city that once poured into them, so they can pour into our future. So I'm super excited to give you the opportunity, or be a part of the group that gave you the opportunity to return home. I came back home, and I love it.
Thank you so much, Logan. Thank you to the Commissioners, thank you Commissioner Campbell. I think he echoes my sentiments. One of the charges from this group, because they care about the community so much, is to be able to provide opportunities to young people. Some of you, your kids who gone off to college, being the opportunity to come back home, and they don't have to make that commute. So that was a focus of ours. I'm excited to have Logan. As Commissioner Campbell said, a young, fresh mind, excited to see the journey, her being a part of this great team that we already have here in the City of Palatka, so I'm excited for the future for us, I'm excited for the future of the community as well. So thank you so much. Thank you to mom for being here tonight. It was a pleasure meeting you, so thank you so much.
Again, thank, thank you, mom, as I said earlier, thank you, Logan. I'm happy to be a part of this, I'm growing our own, welcome, welcome home.
Nothing like sowing this seed and reading the hearts, so that's what this is all about, and we are definitely super excited, and so when you'll take over, I never thought Gen X would be the old group.
I need to tell you, but I'm the new forty, you can keep on...
I'm gonna be forty-five.
If I got to hang out with y'all, I'm the new forty.
Next up, employee recognition. John Dudas from the Water Department has twenty years in, also is from the Fire Department. Got a couple of recognitions. David Zimmer here. David Zimmer's not here, what about Sophia Smith? Sophia Smith has five years with the Fire Department, and David Zimmer has seven years. Our employee recognition reads as follows: Employee recognition of the City of Palatka City Commission hereby expresses our sincere appreciation and award this certificate to the named employee in this situation, David Zimmer, in grateful recognition of seven years of outstanding performance, productivity, and dedicated service, public service, to the citizens of Palatka awarded this eighth day of March two thousand and eighteen. Now we'll move on. Moving the agenda to item two, which is public comment. Public comment will be limited to three minutes, no action will be taken on topics of discussion. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment, including Mr. Aaron Robinson, will have to fill out a speaker's card in the back of the room. It's the yellow speaker's card on the back of the table. Fill those out, so that we will have a record of your, of your comments. First up is Mr. Aaron Robinson for Palatka Housing Authority. Please come forward, sir.
My former teacher and great mentor of the McKnight Achievers.
You're a thorough age again, right? Thank you so much, I appreciate being here. My name is Aaron Robinson, I live at twenty-three oh-one Emerald Terrace, Palatka, and I'm here on behalf of John Nelson, who apparently wanted to be here tonight and found that he couldn't. He didn't, in fact, asked me to give the Honorable Commission, we don't have these written to you, so I'm simply going to read that to you, and I have copies that have to be provided for you later. Mayor Terrell Hill and the City Commission, City of Palatka, two oh-one North Second Street, Palatka, Florida. The Honorable Mayor Hill and Honorable Commissioners, while receiving the housing element goals, objectives, and policies of the City of Palatka comprehensive plan, I recommend that policy Article C one one six be amended. The reasons for this recommendation are twofold. While the amount of public housing in the City of Palatka does exceed what would be found in a comparable city with a population of ten thousand and twenty-five hundred houses, if the city had grown since the public housing was constructed in the nineteen seventies, the percentage would be lower. Palatka has not grown its housing supply over the years, which has resulted in the four hundred forty-seven units of public housing appearing to be high percentage in the community. In reality, there are fewer public housing units today than there were in the nineteen seventies. Sure, infusing the city's supply of housing with new units, the percentage will continue to be at the ninety percent level or higher. Lowering the, well, hit to below two percent cannot occur without the role of the city's public housing, or in some better, or better housing in the city. More to the point, without the approval of the federal government, public housing cannot be demolished or sold. Public housing is not a city unto itself. It is a housing that is part of the City of Palatka. Its residents and citizens are of the City of Palatka and do all the benefits and of any other residents of the city, putting through these good, affordable housing, employment opportunities, shopping, and recreational facilities. I am available to assist in the formulation of any amendments if they can, if they so desire. Sincerely, John Nelson, Jr., President, City of Palatka Housing Authority. We thank you for the opportunity, appreciate it.
You're not, you referenced C one six, correct?
Right.
We're not doing anything with C one six today.
What's that?
I figured it was a little bit worse.
Yeah, we, it's been scratched. Yeah, I remember C one one six, but that's not... multiple times. Not that portion. Nothing that's coming before us today, to the best of my knowledge, deals with...
Nothing that's coming before us today, to the best of my knowledge, deals with C one-one-six. We, we have a, uh, element in C one-one-five that simply is an addition that says the city will encourage provision of new and rehabilitated private market workforce dwelling units through expedited permitting and a ten percent density bonus, but that really has nothing to do with public housing. So, uh, I'm not aware of us dealing with C one-one-six at all with the amendments that are proposed.
Okay. Just clarification. Next up, Ms. Legar Kitchens.
I'm at Legar Kitchens, ten thirty-seven South Twelfth Street. And I just want to bring something to your attention. I don't think it needs a vote, but it does need to be checked into. Uh, I came down River Street the other night and just about the time I got where a tent in River is at the Curragh Castle, but I went back, I basically slammed on brakes because right in my eye, eye line with the two huge lights. I thought it was a big semi truck or one of the hunting trucks that has hunting lights on top. And then I thought, well, it's some kind of a device that, that is blocking traffic because of roadwork. And I crept on down River Street and, uh, the cars in front of me were kind of acting weird. And when I got, finally got down close enough, it's the new street light at the city dock. It's the two that are sort of in front of the Presbyterian church. And you can see them from the top of River Street and it hits my eye level, just above my eye level, like where the windshield is. And that's extremely dangerous. I could hardly see the road because the lights were right in my eye. And I, I didn't know what it was, so I got right down to, uh, the, close to the city, uh, the city dock area. And then I saw it was the streetlights. So you need to, I would invite all y'all to drive down River Street, look at it, see what you think it is. Are you probably works to do? Maybe a shield or something? Or maybe move those lights a little bit further away, but it hits right dead center of your eye. It's, it's, I think it's a very, very big hazard. And so I just, I, I don't think it's going to take a vote. I think you can do it by consensus or just, Mr. Mayor, if we just have a couple of works looking to it.
He's making notes as you speak.
Okay, because it, it, I was real, I was just, I kind of went like that. I'm like, what in the world? And that's, I think it's dangerous. I just want to let you all know about it. And the other thing is, and again, I think this is something that you can do, Mr. Mayor, I don't think it takes a vote. I would like the, the commission or you, I would like you all to find out who removed the designation of an evacuation route from River Street. If it was a state, if it was a state evacuation route or the county designated, I would really request that the commission simply, or you, Mr. Mayor, simply find out if you can, who removed that designation. And I'm going to request the same thing of the county commission because I'm just curious. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Ray. How are you, sir?
Fine, thank you. Ray Skarowski, one oh-five, with Saint John's Terrace in East Palatka. But I just want to say, it, timing is everything. There's a season for everything. But with the new budget director there and with Ms. Sheena McCoy over here from three years ago, hearing a prayer, she said, you see everything coming to act of how God's working on our hearts, have nice talks and communicate. But then the public housing, sir, I just wanted to share with you from three years ago, I've seen Palatka grow tremendously financially within the people. But I seen on my heart, the first time I was here, that there would be no more public housing. I even went to the newspaper and said that. For this reason, I see jobs coming to Palatka. I see infrastructure working, our schools getting big, our streets getting paid. People working, not looking for public housing, but they're going to have jobs, they're going to have money in their pocket. They're going to buy the land that they want, build the house they want to build, and be happy because it's not going to be public housing because of what you people are doing here. That, Mr. Mayor, you said you wanted something different three years ago. You've got something different. You've got God working within the hearts of all the people. And the greatest asset of Palatka is not the river or anything else, it's the people and heritage of God's word, not the homeboy. But I just want to say thank you, but I see that vision, that housing is going to be gone because people are going to build their own house the way they want, on the land they want. Thank you for the fine job you did.
Thank you for the positive comments. Moving on to item five of the agenda. Is Coach Fels here? We will, we were skipping consent next one. So, moving on to item three of the agenda. I'm sorry, uh, consent agenda. We have three items on the consent agenda. There's a motion to approve by Commissioner Campbell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McCaskill. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Questions called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries unanimously. Yeah, also, uh, Mr. Powell's in the back of the room, Kevin Powell. Uh, Mr. Powell, can you come up for just one second? Um, I, I think most of you realize that, uh, a few months ago, um, the county, we entered into an open agreement with the county to do all our building inspections, uh, as well as any other inspections that we have within the city as it relates to, uh, duties of the chief building official. Uh, Mr. Powell works in, I guess, triple capacity at this point, if we count his duties with the city. Uh, and I just want to tell you that, uh, Mr. Powell has gone over and beyond the call of duty as it relates to this community, uh, from the city side to make sure, uh, that local businesses interested in coming into this community, receive quality service, that they, that they're enlightened, uh, as well as being able to give some insights to the city on, uh, many different aspects that are coming along here. And Mr. Powell, I want to personally thank you and this commission thanks you for the work that you've done and the way that you've embraced the community as a whole. And so if you, if you can, maybe just give us a couple, get a little update or.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, Commissioners. Right now, uh, we're looking at about a, uh, a, a five-day turnaround of plan review coming in. Really, it's about two days, but we're approximately two days. There's a lot of projects that are coming in. But we have a new racetrack gas station coming in at, uh, nineteen twenty. Uh, so we're excited that that, that project is coming in, uh, and, and, you know, just looking for future projects to come here. I know that you're looking for a new, um, planner and I hope that you're, you're planning out, looking forward to working with that, uh, planner when they come in, that we can go ahead and, uh, can, continue growth in the city and in the county itself. Every, everywhere here, uh, we just want to see growth. I know we, we talked about it, you know, people coming back and jobs coming back. And we, we've really got to make a change here and be, uh, business-minded, bringing those businesses in. And I think we're heading in that direction.
You're also serving in another capacity with the county as well, aren't you?
Um, serving in several capacities with the county.
Well, we need to thank him too, because.
Four divisions. I have four divisions. I'm the interim director of planning and development, which encompasses four divisions.
And also the chief building official.
And the chief, well, that is one of them, right?
And man, we need to really thank him because he never, since I've been sitting here, had a building inspector that thought enough of us to come down meetings and tell us what was going on.
Absolutely.
And I want to tell you, I appreciate it. I know the rest of them do too. Because when we know that growth is coming, then we know where we need to do to help, do what we need to do to help you get them here.
Yes, ma'am. I feel it's the right thing to do to come in here, especially during public comment. There's a, a question of building or anything going on. I feel that somebody should represent the city on, on the building side of it. So, that's, that's why I did come over this evening.
Well, I appreciate it. I, I, I'll tell you, and I had an opportunity during the Azalea Festival, just spent several hours. Uh, we were, we were looking at old cards, but we were end up talking about the city. And, um, just, uh, and about the community as a whole and just to hear the level of passion that comes with the power was just outstanding. And it was something that was refreshing for us and we definitely are, it, it's definitely a, a treasure for us to have you with, with us for this time.
Thank you very much. You saw the link and didn't make it to the front page? I, I, I appreciate it, um, uh, Mayor Commissioners for giving us the opportunity to go ahead and assist you and try to build the bonds between the city and the county, uh, like we've not had before. And, uh, I, I, I really see things coming together and, and I appreciate it.
Can I say one thing? For those of us who've dealt with building and zoning for a lot of years, I'll tell you that the, the beginning of the change in culture at the county building and zoning department is obvious, positive. Um, and, uh, what we've been talking about at the city level for a long time. And, uh, hopefully that can be contagious to, to our own planning department. And then we, we come back to Palatka with our own planner and start assuming some of those, some of those roles. But I've experienced it firsthand. I've experienced it with clients, uh, at the county level. And, uh, just want to give you guys a shout out that everybody talks about things when they don't go right with government, but when they go, when they go right, I don't think we talk about it enough, so, thanks.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
And this, and then, and this work just exemplifies what happens when the city and county are working together in concert for one, for one simple purpose. And so, again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He's with us five days, five days a week.
Moving on to item five of the agenda. Don't see Coach Fels here tonight. I'll, I'll entertain a motion to table.
Motion to table.
Second. It's a motion for a second. Any readiness, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries unanimously. Item six on the agenda is our public hearing. Public hearing ordinance, public hearing ordinance amending the city of Palatka Comprehensive Plan to reflect statutory changes in state requirements, which have occurred from two thousand eight to two thousand sixteen, as mandated by Florida statutes one sixty-three, thirty-one, ninety-one. Text amended, Palatka Building and Zoning is applicant, first reading for transmittal to state agencies for review.
An ordinance of the city of Palatka, Florida, amending the comprehensive plan of the city of Palatka and more specifically by adding policy C point one, point one, point five, housing element. Amending policy B point one, point two, point five, traffic circulation element. Amending policy H point one, point one, point two, capital improvement plan. Amending goal H point two, capital improvement plan. Amending policy H point two, point one, point one, capital improvement plan. Deleting policy H point two, point one, point four, capital improvement plan. Amending policy H point three, point one, point four, capital improvement plan. Deleting policy H point one, point two, point six, capital improvement plan. Deleting policy H point one, point two, point seven, capital improvement plan. Amending policy D point one, point five, point two, public facilities element. Providing conflicts with other ordinances and providing an effective date.
Someone.
Mr. Holmes?
Um, first of all, I'll note there's a typographical error. I pointed out before Ms. Kitchens does, uh, improvement. No, this is a different one. Yeah, you missed this.
Well, good for you, you caught one.
Get blind, Paul, you know. Fourth line from the bottom, it says improvement and improvement doesn't have an E at the end, does it?
Commissioner Campbell, I know you're a teacher and you're correcting on that one. Where to stay?
Commissioners, um, you, you recall that we actually, uh, passed a resolution to transmit changes in the comprehensive plan to the Department of Economic Opportunity, I believe, at our last meeting, negative meeting for. In, in any event, uh, in working with DEO, um, it appears that a couple of the amendments that we, uh, proposed for transmittal had not been vetted by the planning commission. So, uh, all of the amendments, including those that had previously been discussed as part of the EAR process, were considered by the planning commission at its meeting on Tuesday and they recommended, uh, transmittal and adoption. So what we have done now to try to save time is go ahead and, um, bring for your consideration and passage on first reading, not final adoption, but on first reading, the actual amendments themselves, which have now all been vetted by the planning commission, which unanimously recommended them, uh, we'll pass them or hopefully pass them on first reading. They will then be transmitted, the adoption ordinance will be transmitted to DEO. And when they provide us their comments on these, we will bring this orders back up for final adoption. But the transmittal that will now take place, assuming you pass this ordinance, um, will, uh, will move us along with the process of updating our comprehensive plan and bringing into compliance with state law.
We'll now report for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we will close public hearing. Is there any further discussion from the commission? Questions called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to city manager and administrative reports. Chief Shaw. As Chief Shaw comes up, we want to make sure that we congratulate him, uh, in the Palatka High School boys' basketball team. We got a chance to travel down to Lakeland yesterday to watch them play in the semifinal game. Unfortunately, they were on the wrong side of a sixty-five to sixty-one victory. But it is a major feat for the city of Palatka to have that, those young men grow in such a way that they represented us at the state championships. So, it's a testament to the meaning that they have in their lives and the work ethics that, that's been, um, instilled in them. And so, Chief, we thank you again for all the work that you've done, um, with our youth and with our police department.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor. Commissioners. Uh, we have two brief things to discuss today. And one is just a reminder that we have our Black Pride, uh, withhold of Black Pride event at night in Maine on March twenty-fourth. And also, I'm not sure Captain Lee discussed in our last meeting, it was to the success of our gala, the cheese gala for Black Power. We had a, we had a gala, uh, held, um, just a couple of weeks ago, uh, on the sixteenth of February, at the Price Martin Center, fundraising for our police athletic league. A very nice event, beautiful event. We had a number of individuals that attended. We were very thankful for everyone who attended from the commission as well as from our citizens and the community. And we wanted to, uh, let everyone know that it was a very good success. And we will be releasing the numbers soon. We have a meeting that's going to be taking place on Monday, twelfth, uh, for our Black, our Power Board meeting, and we should be hearing numbers from there. But we want to be able to say publicly, thank you to all who attended and we look forward to next year's event.
Yes, sir. Captain?
Sir.
Do you have anything for us today?
No, sir.
It's a pleasure having you here.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Do you have anything from finance?
Thanks, sir. Not today. Give me a couple of weeks.
That's Ms. Robinson here. Mr. Griffith?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Wow. Take a record of that. Ms. Driggers? Everybody ready to go home? She's nodding, you know. Mr. Holmes?
I'll get to the jury.
That's illegal, counseling. Mr. Foster?
Yes, um, only one quick thing I want to mention tonight. Well, two things. Thank you again, Logan. Uh, three things now. Thank you to the Palatka boys' basketball team. It was a pleasure going down to support them. And then my last thing is, is in December, uh, we're going to start recognizing employees for their years of service. So seven years, obviously, we know why we're in the city of Palatka. Five years, ten years, twenty, twenty-five, and so on. But there was an employee who hit twenty-year mark in December. Um, and I know everything was probably going on with looking for a manager and things like that. And so, I wasn't here for that, but I'm going to make sure we recognize this employee at our next meeting. Uh, but I want to recognize her now as well. Our very own clerk hit twenty years in December. And so I want to make sure that we appreciate her, um, and, and, and so, next, so next, so next meeting, uh, she will be on there for twenty years, but it occurred in December. But I want to let you guys know that now, because we're going to do something nice for her. I appreciate you so much. I know we do as well, but I want to thank you personally. I want to thank you out loud to our very own clerk, Ms. Betsy Driggers, alright? Thank you.
Betsy, we thought it was way more than twenty years.
See, I'm not as old as you think.
It's not based on age, it's based on institutional knowledge. So, uh, are you done?
Yes, I'm done.
Sure, than I expected. Mr. Borum?
Alright, just short and brief. Uh, I know we need to, I'd like to get a, a financial report of, you know, where we're at in, with the cities, the city budget, how we're performing over the year. Um, I asked Matt before he left in verbal. Um, so I want to reach out to our city manager to see what we can do. Uh, need those on an ongoing basis so we know how the city's performing. Um, and last, we got to set up a, a meeting with the city manager as well, just kind of talk a little bit about. a little bit about, um, what, what I'm, what I'm looking for as it relates to, um, vision, city vision.
Rebecca Borum, it's time for the vision strategy again.
Yeah. And also, just, uh, overall evaluation, I've, I spoke with, uh, one of the departments that said that they had not, they had not had any evaluation in over twelve years, so things like that, we need to know how we're performing as departments, how we are servicing our community, and, um, so that we don't get those, we get complaints, but we need to know how our, our people are performing, so that's what I have, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner McCaskill? Vice Mayor Brown?
Well, I'm gonna take a couple of minutes, so y'all, I, I, I think it's wonderful, all the wonderful things we've been doing with our young people, but we kinda forgot, uh, about some of our senior citizens. And seeing that I'm one, and I'm into something that people don't always know that I do, I'd like to see us, um, have a little festival or a place that, and I have a place for it, on my corner in Saint, and, uh, at Saint Mary's. Have an art show for senior citizens. We got a bunch of them sit in rooms, and they mix stuff all the time, and some of them would like to sell them, but they don't have a way to do it, and I would like to take sometime this year, get us a, a small committee together, and just maybe put a tent up on one Saturday and let the seniors come out, and maybe feed them a hot dog and a, and a soda or some water or something, and let them have a day to sit out, and that would give them some income and give some encouragement for them to get up and do something every day. We, we need to have, uh, some inspiration to, to get up and do stuff, and everybody doesn't do it, and we have people who make beautiful stuff. So, I'll be putting that to, to you all, I just wanna put you on alert, to have your support, so we can have that senior art festival, or senior art day, or whatever we wanna call it. Saint Mary's said that we can use their, their yard and my corner, and I think that we can have a nice, small, little something to make them feel good about the things that, that they do every day. My second thing is, y'all really got me last time, and I...
What are you talking about?
Well, you gave me a very nice award last, uh, two weeks ago, and, um, you caught me speechless, and that's kinda unusual, and I did not really say, I did not really say a proper thank you. But I have sat in this chair a long time, and I've worked with a large group of, a number of people in being mayors and commissioners and, and staff, and this, this term has been one of the best terms I've ever had. Not only have you all produced, but you all have listened, and you've taken some of the ideas and not just sat there and waved them off, or sat there and just looked at them. You, um, have started to work and put them forward, and I think, for the love of you all that I have, and for the love of this town, that the town has become better in the last, uh, three and a half years. I wanna encourage you all to keep it up, and remember what I always say to you all, we're better together, and that goes for staff and everybody. And I hope we'll continue to stick together and work, and if the people sitting in the audience and listen to us, who just look around the city and see the changes that have been made, you'll understand why I say that. And I'd like to just tell y'all, thanks for thanking me. It's not necessary. I do it for the love of you all and the love of Palaka, and thank you. That's all.
It's kinda hard. Um, but just real quickly, um, we are in the process of finalizing everything with this year's internship. Um, the city manager, Mr. Foster, reached out, and we are looking at ways to make the internship experience a little bit, um, better than what it has been in the years past. We, um, are excited because we know that each year gets better and better, um, as we provide opportunities for our, uh, college students as well as high school students to get workforce experience right here in Palaka, which one day, we hope to turn around, and we have the Logans of the world, the Justins of the world, the Terry Hills of the world, um, as well as everybody else of the world, but have them return back in Palaka to start their careers here, so we're excited about that, and we should be finalizing that information, getting that out, uh, by the end of March.
Also, Commissioner, on that note, the chamber has, there was a lot of interest from the chamber with participating internship programs. Well, um, me and Mr. Foster brought it over to them, and they should be contacting you if you cannot, um, get with Mr. Pickens or Dana Jones.
Thank you, sir.
Um, Ms. Brown, you deserve everything you that you get. Those people don't know what you do in this community, and we're gonna make sure that you get your flowers while we have a chance to give them to you.
So that they can smell them.
So that you can smell them. We know that somebody in your family is gonna be the last to put you down, but we're gonna make sure that we do it while you're here. Uh, but the, uh, the, the, the reality of what we have going on in Palaka is a lot of energy, uh, for those who, uh, have not had an opportunity to talk to Zara and Foster. If you have thirty minutes of extra time, uh, make sure that you talk to them, it'll take an hour. But Mr. Foster and Logan, uh, they've come into Palaka even prior to even starting, and they've been working. They've been working long hours, and they brought an energy here that's different from what we've had before. But they listen, and they have vision, even as young people, and I think it's, uh, it's very, um, powerful to have someone who can create cohesiveness between generations and also between people from all different walks of life, and I think that's one of the things that's happened in the city. Uh, on that note, uh, for those who want to participate, our race study circles are continuing. Uh, we are on the second round of race study circles inside the city of Palaka. We had, um, five groups participate the first time. There are an additional four groups participating now. The race study circles have made it outside of the city limits, they will be in, in Alak and in other areas going on this cycle. Uh, so Putnam County as a whole has started to embrace the concept. For those who want to participate on Tuesdays at nine AM at the River Center will be a study circle. Uh, and if you want, if you want to participate, uh, please let me know, and I'll put you in touch with the proper person.
Mayor, there are, there's actually information on the website, and there is a link to sign up.
Okay. You've got information on the website, and then there's a link to sign up as well. So if you wanna participate in any of the circles, just go, just go through the city's website, and you can do so. Uh, next is the funding. Uh, for those who don't know, we spent a lot of time in Tallahassee this year, uh, working very closely with Becca Poliakov, um, and we, for the first time, in a long time, we had money in the senate's budget. Uh, unfortunately, after the events that took place at Parkland, we, uh, the five-hundred million dollars that were appropriated for school safety, it wiped out water projects on the senate side, and so, there was none, and this is the first time, probably in history, that we've not had a water project funded on the senate side of the budget. Uh, we were unable to get, Representative Payne was unable to get any funding on the House side of the budget. The House's water projects were funded, there was only one project out of six out of Putnam County that was funded, uh, out of all the projects that were there, but the senate basically waived its funding for water projects, and that money was reallocated in different ways. Uh, but we continue to be hopeful. We just came out of a USDA workshop, along, along with the rural economic development workshop, which again, created other opportunities and additional money streams that are available. Um, we're on the list, which is a step forward from where we were before. The relationships have been made, uh, people are aware of who, where Palaka is and who Palaka is, and it's, it's time that we continue to move forward. Fortunately for us, um, we've made strides internally to make sure that we, that we meet our own needs, uh, and that we become self-sufficient. Uh, and so, we're gonna move forward from there. I think this session for us was a success because it allowed us to get to the speaker and to the speaker table, and that's a very difficult thing to do, and to have Palaka put on the table for the first time. Um, and so, we will continue to move forward. I think our lobbyists are doing a great job, um, in making sure that those relationships are made. Uh, lastly, as it relates to school safety, and that's a major topic here in this community, uh, our hearts again go out, uh, to the victims in Parkland. Uh, but there are a lot of things that need to be addressed in this community, and it's a very hot topic. Uh, the city of Palaka does not have an official stance at this time as it relates to the school district's policy, uh, of implementing, uh, guns into the schools, because we've not been provided with the information to take a position. Uh, once that communication takes place, uh, then we will make an assessment as to how it works, but the one thing that we're truly concerned about is our children, uh, the effects of the reactions, but we're also concerned, um, with making sure that everyone's safe, and making sure that we do things properly within this city, because many times, we're the first responders to a lot of these calls that come in place. I think the chief and his team do a great job in making sure that we are absolutely prepared, and that we've dotted every i and crossed every t, and so we'll continue to rely heavily upon him for guidance during these situations, uh, as we move forward. So again, uh, within the city, we will continue to stand behind, uh, Chief Shaw and his team, but we don't have enough information at this time to take any position as it relates to the matters, um, that are being addressed from the school district side. It seems that they are very much in a planning phase as opposed to anything else at this point, and we just wanna make sure that every option has been thought of as we continue to make those decisions. We're in festival time, Azalea Festival, uh, was great, and thank everyone for attending the mayor's reception and getting an opportunity to hear classic violin and neo soul gospel. Uh, something different, fretless rock, uh, violin, a violin and celloist in the city of Palaka, uh, bringing about, um, I think, a different cultural music and entertainment to the community, but also, um, it brought out some different businesses that have not been present before, and just opportunities for citizens to network, and so, uh, we're moving forward, and we're looking forward to more festivals, more growth, more prosperity, and more unity in this community, and Commissioner Borum will have the last word.
Well, I just wanted to share with the, uh, last weekend's event with the, uh, the, car show, the Azalea Festival, as well as, um, the kidney awareness walk, those events, um, are all coincided together at the same time, and they all work well, everybody cooperated with each other, so, uh, I just wanted to at least share that, and we thank everybody for coming out.
And, and lastly, I think, all too many times, I never take time out to thank the commission for the work that they do. Uh, our commissioners are everywhere, you know, when you walk through a gym in Lakeland, and you see Commissioner Borum supporting the kids, uh, or you're at any other event that are around this community, and you, you're always gonna see a commissioner there, um, and I don't think people understand sometimes the sacrifices that are made, um, and it gets to be frustrating at times because people want you to correct a hundred and thirty years worth of problems in three years, and it's just not gonna happen that way. Luckily, we've got great staff and great leadership and great citizens, um, who really embrace change, and so, as we move forward, I wanna thank this commission personally for the work that you've done, I wanna thank this, I wanna thank our staff and our leadership, uh, for the commitment that you have in going over and beyond what your job specifications are on many occasions, and I also wanna thank our citizens for seeing the vision and helping us move this community forward through unity.